Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Saco City Council Workshop this evening at 6:30 PM. Tonight, we have with us the Long Range Planning Committee, along with Director Prescott and GP Cog and PAX, and they do have a presentation for us this evening on the Route One Master Plan.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight as well. We're joined here by the Long Range Planning Committee. As you can see, there's a lot of us. We're all very happy to be here, and we've really enjoyed what we've been able to do so far in our meetings, talking about the long-term growth and health of Saco. I've really been productive. So, tonight, what we're going to be doing is hearing from our GP Cog, Greater Portland Council of Governments, PAX representative here, our consultant, who's going to show us a little bit about the Portland Road Master Plan, what they've been working on so far. Really, a lot of their work has been on data collection and visioning with this Long Range Planning Committee, and you'll see that this is going to kick off the next step of this plan. So, you won't get recommendations tonight, but we will be back in the springtime, later in the spring, with some concrete recommendations to move us forward. You're going to hear a little bit from Christian Rodman here, I'll hand it off to him in a minute, about how this is going to be coordinated with the other plans going on. I know we've talked before about there's a lot of plans, and we don't want to see anything shelved, but sometimes we have to do these plans in order to get to the next step and to really move things forward for our community. So, with that, I'll hand it off to Christian, and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you. All right, so, we are here, as Emily mentioned, to speak about the Portland Road Subarea Plan. Portland Road, obviously, being a section of Route One, but the particular area that we're studying is between the I-95 overpass and the Scarborough Town Line. And important context here to acknowledge is that smack dab in the middle of that section is the proposed new school site, so it's a really driving factor for us as we consider this entire corridor. So, the Long Range Planning Committee, who, as you know, is sitting right here, have developed quite a thoughtful and frankly ambitious vision statement for the project, that we will build a new, community-oriented identity for Portland Road by fostering places where people of all ages wish to connect, create, enjoy, and live. And for many folks who travel this corridor of Portland Road right now, it's not quite meeting that threshold. It doesn't have a particular sense of identity. It's kind of a mishmash of development. It's very sort of driven by its purpose as a road, without too much else going around on the edges. And so, the Long Range Planning Committee, to their credit, have come up with this really exciting and ambitious vision that we're going to try and realize. So, you may have seen something like this before. In 2019, there was a sort of joint study between the cities of Saco and Scarborough to imagine complete streets sort of across the two towns throughout that entire corridor. We're shrinking the focus down to Portland Road between I-95 and Scarborough to really get into the nitty-gritty of possibilities for, you know, how we might move forward in terms of zoning within one committee's, instead of splitting the difference between two communities, really getting into the weeds with Saco and a particular area of Saco. But we're certainly building on this report, and it's informing the context of where we're going with it as well. So, I'm going to let Emily pop back in here, but she alluded to this previously, which is that you all have a lot of plans and a lot of planning activity, and it's really exciting, but it's certainly a lot. So, I just want to let her speak to that really quick.
Yeah, thank you. So, as you all know, we have our transportation master plan that's moved through. We've done public outreach and communication on that. We just had a great meeting with the Traffic Safety Committee, so that's moving into the master planning phases. The Housing Action Plan just kicked off. That's going to look at all sorts of different housing opportunities and challenges within the community of Saco totally, and that's going to look at affordable housing, workforce housing opportunities, housing in general, because Saco has a lot of housing types. And the reimagining Route One is going to be looking at a large corridor that GP Cog is spearheading, a large corridor of the state of Maine that's going to go all the way down toward the York Line, and that's going to look at how we look at Route One in the future as a destination area, and this study will align with that as well. And then, we'll be guided by the comprehensive plan, which, as we all know, is already adopted and approved. So, I just want to make sure that there's some context as to, we've got all these studies, and how do they fit? Well, we're making sure as planning staff to coordinate the different consultants, making sure they're all discussing the different data points that are coming out of it, so that things can be coordinated as much as possible, even though these studies have slightly different timelines.
Thank you. So, moving forward, again, we mentioned this previously, but there's a lot of important current context around this project in that there is a new school site and development that will be online in, give or take, five years, and that's going to inform this project and this whole corridor in two particular ways. One is the potential for significant trips generated by the school to and from. That can be, you know, buses, that can be individual vehicles, that can be pedestrian trips to the school, and also a desire for that school to be operating in a safe environment that has a neighborhood identity. So, we want the school to benefit from the character of the neighborhood, and we want the neighborhood to be safe for school traffic back and forth. In terms of timeline, we sort of had a, we have been doing sort of the back-end work in terms of processing some of the existing developments that are approved or online, understanding the traffic demands that those are expecting, so that we can understand the context of just how ambitious a plan might be able to be moving forward in terms of particular directions, either traffic engineering, you know, like the way that the lanes are striped, or the number of lanes, versus more zoning and development and incentive-based recommendations to sort of define the urban character around Route One. We certainly are going to be working very closely with the Long Range Planning Committee moving forward. We'll be checking in with the city council, and really, the next important phase, and we'll mention this a couple times during this presentation, is to really get out in the community and start doing some meaningful engagement with stakeholders. That's going to inform, frankly, the rest of the project pretty heavily, and so, we're sort of right in the middle of understanding the corridor, understanding the sort of data inputs, and now pivoting to that collection of community ideas, community input, community direction and support. So, speaking of existing conditions, it's always worth it to be reminded of just sort of what exactly we're talking about when we're talking about, you know, a plan for an area, and pretty often, I think we experience this section of Route One in an automobile, sort of, you know, jetting through, and it's a quick, you know, process, and it's important to remember that an equally valid experience is outside of a car, on, you know, on foot, on bike, and that often, that experience is decisively less pleasant, and frankly, decisively less engaging. And so, it's, you know, you're very close to cars, you are often working without a sidewalk on certain sides, or with limited sidewalk facilities, and there is a dramatically incredible shift of character along the way. There's single-family homes, there are amusement parks, there are sort of low-slung commercial developments, there are certainly auto dealerships along the auto mile. So, it's got a pretty wide array of experiences along the corridor, but nothing's really tying them together, except for the one cohesive experience, which is a lot of pavement, a lot of cars, and just sort of the sense that this is a place designed to get folks through, as opposed to two. So, to illustrate that a little bit further, we sort of think about it in terms of, what's the urban form of the area? How is the transportation functioning? And then, sort of, what's the identity? How do those tie together? And so, right now, the urban form is frankly, not really, it's hard to define, frankly. It's just, that's why it's a squiggle right now. It's unclear what it is. The one thing that does seem to be really beefed up is that transportation infrastructure for automobiles, but that's sort of the defining characteristic, and it's leading to a sense of, what is this section of town? What is its purpose? What does it do well? Why should people, you know, be going there as a destination? In an ideal world, these three things would be sort of tying together and building off of one another, so that the urban form is, you know, reinforced by limited transportation infrastructure that is serving the needs of all users, that is working in the context of the neighborhood, and that these things are all building up together to form one cohesive identity. That's a pretty far throw from where we are today, but it does tie into that ambition of the Long Range Planning Committee, and so, we want to acknowledge that. In the short term, it's helpful, I think, to just sort of acknowledge small wins, though, and sort of the next incremental step that we can get to with energy and enthusiasm. So, how can we sort of make that urban form have a little bit more coherence? How can we de-emphasize the impact of Portland Road as four lanes of just traffic? And how can we start to create little nuggets of identity along that way, so that we can build off of those successes slowly but surely over the next three, five, 10 years? So, one of the ways that we like to think about these kinds of projects are just in terms of, who are the stakeholders? Who are the property owners? What do those properties look like? So that if you get somebody on board that really wants to contribute to a different vision for an area, you know, where might you be able to have that impact, and how much impact might you be able to have? So, these are all of the parcel lines within Saco's Portland Road Zone, so from your zoning ordinances. And one of the things that, as you all certainly know already, a lot of the corridor is sort of dedicated to auto dealerships or auto dealership-related properties. So, those highlighted in black on the screen are all sort of auto dealerships in one way or another. The other thing that we like to think about, too, is just sort of shared ownership, and I want to acknowledge that ownership data changes quickly, parcels get sold, so this might not be the most up-to-exact-of-the-moment information, because I might have missed a sale or two, but any of these sort of multi-colored parcels that share a color, so the reds, the light blues, the purples, those are all in common ownership. And so, you can see that sometimes, you're not just talking about the opportunity to interact with one parcel, sometimes you're talking about the opportunity to interact with two, or three, or four, or five. Obviously, city ownership comes into play, the development of the school comes into play, and sort of knowing, you know, against those properties, what other parcels might you be able to work with, a private party, to, you know, identify what could go there, what the city would like to see. So, between those two things, we sort of are considering two primary opportunities, and this is like not a specific spot on the map, it's meant to be general, sort of building off of two ideas. One is that auto dealerships, and this will tie into the community engagement that we're hoping to get into in the near future, we'd like to sort of understand better if the needs of auto dealerships today are exactly the needs of auto dealerships in 10 years, in terms of currently and for the last several decades, there's been a lot of asphalt dedicated to a lot of inventory to be onsite, to be ready, so that somebody can see every model of every car, can hop into it, and can get the keys, and can drive off. With things like the internet and people being really well-informed and just having a lot of sense of what's out there, and also folks being very used to sort of on-demand services, it's not hard to imagine that the physical form and space needs of dealerships might change over the next decade or so. And so, we're really looking to see if there is an opportunity. It's an open question. Is there an opportunity to think about that auto mile as a potential way that we could think about consolidation, or we could think about, you know, if lot sizes are going to shrink, could the city step in proactively? Is there an opportunity there? Again, it's an open question, we don't know the answer. And then, the second part, sort of farther up, closer to the Scarborough Town Line, is just to acknowledge that there's already a tremendous amount of residential activity there, residential development that's been happening. So, if you're talking about creating compelling places that people want to be, that businesses want to locate, that people want to frequent, it certainly helps to have a critical mass of people, and so, when you already have, you know, apartments, condos, homes being built, and there's already a natural enthusiasm for that, how can we harness that energy and that enthusiasm, and make sure that the zoning in that area, that the, you know, incentives or challenges are sort of lining up in the correct way? And I feel like we've talked a lot about sort of the challenges of being along this stretch of Portland Road, but it's important to acknowledge one really amazing opportunity, which is the Eastern Trail. It certainly, you know, it comes in, it comes out, it's farther away, it's closer, it crosses. The context varies, but just the fact that you all have this incredible resource, this pedestrian and cyclist resource that has so much character and connectivity potential is just really astounding for this stretch, and so, we certainly want to acknowledge that and build off of that as an opportunity. So, do you want to also just acknowledge some big, broader challenges as we think about, you know, what does it mean to plan for an area like this? What does it mean to come up with a vision and try and come up with successful, helpful next steps? So, first of all, and we alluded to this before, there's sort of two ways, two levers that we can pull on at the moment, and one is sort of zoning and city policies, and to influence the urban form around the corridor. The other is the actual transportation engineering of the actual road itself, and since it's a, you know, a main DOT road, there's also traffic engineering standards. Some folks might say, if I had a magic wand, I'd make it less lanes, I'd make it more lanes. It depends on who you're talking to, but there are standards that need to be met and thresholds that needed to be exceeded in order to make those changes, and so, to some degree, the city's hands will be limited by what the data shows, with the development that's already been permitted, with the development that's coming online, that already has come online. So, it's important to acknowledge that as a potential lever, but also to acknowledge it as one has to be informed by traffic data, and that we need the state DOT to be sort of onboard with as well. So, really want to acknowledge the opportunity for land use and zoning controls as an opportunity here, as well as just sort of proactive partnership with, you know, between the public and private entities that are going to be shaping this vision for Portland Road. The other is that, I think often, when we come up with a plan or an idea, we want it to, you know, come true right away, and unfortunately, that's just not how these things work. They happen to be piecemeal, they happen to take time, and so, there'll be, assuming that we come out of this process with a cohesive vision for Portland Road in Saco in the study area, there'll still be some developments coming in, coming through the pipeline, that might not quite cohere with that vision, but that's okay, these things take time. Again, we're thinking in terms of three, five, 10 years, and we're going to, you know, work towards having that, that vision be as implementable as possible. In terms of next steps, as Emily alluded to, we're certainly going to be working with the other teams that are working on the other broader plans. We all want these plans to inform one another, so that they can be as effective as possible and as helpful as possible to the city of Saco. Bolded here, because it's one of the most important things, is public engagement. We really want to be reaching out to specifically dealerships along the auto mile, to property owners and stakeholders along the entire corridor, as well as the general public, to make sure that folks are onboard with the types of things that we're talking about, hearing from individuals, and from the Long Range Planning Committee. And then, certainly, we'll be working after that with the Long Range Planning Committee to draft recommendations, so that we can check in with you all in the spring or summer to be sure that we're on the right track, so that as we move towards development of a final report, that we know that it already has the blessing of your vision, and that we're going in the right direction. And so, with that, I'll pass it off to Tracy and Emily, and you all, to see if there's any questions or additional clarifications.
Great. Thank you, Christian. Before we pass off, any questions based on what Christian just provided us? Okay. Tracy? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this has been a really good project, and I know that as we move forward, I think it's certainly warranted within the area, especially when I have people coming in for companies and what makes sense for out in that area. So, I'm really excited about working with this group on this project.
And if it's okay with you, I'd like to just ask the Long Range Planning Committee if there's anything that they'd like to add to the discussion here?
Yep, sure. I do have a couple of quick questions first. So, Chris, the complete streets with Scarborough, are we looking at doing a similar style of zoning, so that you are looking at both zoning here and in Scarborough, so that it kind of does a fluid transition? Kind of matching?
So, for the purposes of this project, we are only thinking of Saco, we are only thinking of this particular chunk of Saco. I think it makes a lot of sense to consider, once you get across the border, you know, are these things simpatico? But for the purposes of our role as serving the city of Saco, we are solely serving the city of Saco with this project.
Okay, perfect, yep. And then, second, my biggest thing is, like you stated, between now, as we're going forward with this plan, and there's been a lot of great advancements, the information, I love the way that the group has been working together. In the course of that, like you stated, we may have some developers coming in. So, to me, the outreach portion is a huge piece, so that we, I've always felt that over the years, we've lost a lot of, or have gotten the wrong types of development, because we didn't have a real So to me, the outreach portion is a huge piece so that we, I've always felt that over the years, we've lost a lot of, or have gotten the wrong types of development because we didn't have a relationship with the landowners. And they've just gone ahead, and they've taken the best price or what they felt versus the city being able to work and talk to them in what our plan is, so that we can assist. Right now, I know that the property in front of Pack Edge is a perfect example right now. I would love to see the city actively working with the developer or with the real estate agent on that, trying to make sure that we have a say, is what might come in, or trying to entice the correct developer in that spot right there. So that is just, again, for me, and that's, not only is it residential, but it's a huge tourist area. Everybody coming up from Cascade Road, from Old Orchard, they're coming up Cascade Road right now to go to Scarborough, to go to Portland. We want them to come down to Saco. So that whole area there, offering with the amusement parks, and you guys know I've always put my two cents in as to what I would like to see out there, but I think that's a big piece of it to take as well, is it's not just residential, but we also have to look at our tourists and what they're going to be looking for those four or five months out of the year in that area, and helping to promote our businesses that we already have, Fun Town, Splash Town, Aquaboggin. So, great, thank you, guys, and again, I do appreciate all the work you've done.
And I really appreciate that because one of the things that we've been asked when, so we have a lot of conversations, the staff around the table here, when we see concept plans, we've said we want commercial in the front along Portland Road, that's been really important to us. But there have been a few conversations we've had where then the next question is, well, where is the plan? So we've been sharing the recommendations or the work so far in the Long Range Planning Committee's long-term vision statement, but I think having the plan will allow us to say, here is what the community would like to see out there, which we're kind of missing that piece, and we have very flexible zoning. So I really appreciate that question and statement to us, thank you.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. You've assembled a very competent group here, so I'm pleased to see the faces at the table, and you all have very good skill sets, so I appreciate your efforts in helping with this. I can only see good things when we get done, because I've been sitting here waiting for about four years for this moment, maybe longer, I know Mike's been at it for a while, but this is good, good progress. I just, I'm trying to set my expectations a little bit for the draft recommendations, and is it safe to assume that, although, you know, we're the policymakers here at the dais, that these recommendations would cover a gamut of different issues? The things that come to mind just off the top of my head are the potential for some ordinance changes, maybe talking about credit enhancements, impact fee reduction incentives for certain uses, perhaps identifying some state resources to match up with local resources so that we can address those with action plans. I just hope we come out of this with action. I do not like inertia, and so I'm hopeful that when we get those draft recommendations, we will have something that's got some teeth to it, and we can, we can address that as well. So is that a reasonable expectation of this process?
Yeah, may I? So, yeah, there'll be a whole list of different types of recommendations for policies. I just want to caution us, I would not go down the impact fee route, but there will be plenty of opportunities to look at what we can do for development, whether that be private-public partnerships or zoning, indoor zoning ordinance or other ordinance amendment revisions. And I know Tracy has some she'd like to add to here as well.
Yeah, Emily's correct as far as in that, the area out there that we are speaking of is also an opportunity zone. So that's a benefit that this community has that not all communities have. And that's within Pack Edge, they took advantage of that opportunity zone. We do have the incentives, you know, in the area, it's a transit-oriented district, so again, there are, there are other things that we can look at as far as to entice development and the type of development that we want, absolutely.
Thank you. Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Just to build on that a little bit, I'm really excited about the project and the vision you've laid out and integrating the transportation and the urban feel and really the vision. And what I see fundamentally here is a really unique area. We have huge transit, the transit rule can't be underestimated, and the amount of traffic that it's going to pass through there, especially with the new schools, but also the tourism and also the residential development, I think both provides a challenge and an opportunity, right? We need to keep traffic moving really well, people use it as a transit corridor, as a commuting corridor, but with the tourists, with the additional traffic the schools are going to bring, with the additional residential traffic and people and consumer base, I think it presents a really unique opportunity, along with the Eastern Trail and the tourism and the active transit that brings. So I'm super excited to see what you guys are going to do with that, and I really liked the way you framed it and trying to put all those things together. And, yeah, just really excited to see what comes out of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Any questions from the committee members or comments? Well, we don't have a standing meeting time, but we've been meeting Mondays before council at 5:00 to 6:00. We may change that because it's a long night for us, but we enjoy spending time with anyone who wants to drop by.
Great. Thank you, everyone, we appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, have a good night. Okay, I'd now like to call to order the Saco City Council meeting for February 3, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Would like to make note that all members of council are present with the exception of Counselor Johnston, who has been excused, and the city administrator Behanko. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the freedom of speech, liberation, and freedom of liberty in Texas.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, up next, item number four, we do have committee correspondence to council. Anyone wishing to speak? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I am a member of the newly-appointed ad hoc grievance committee with Counselor Gunn and Counselor Johnston. We, I just wanted to report, we had our first meeting on January 29, and during that meeting, we tried to look at process and how we wanted to move forward with evaluating and reviewing the grievance issues. And so we agreed that our preferred method would be to do the, complete the grievance review duties by deliberating over each grievance issue one at a time, one issue per committee meeting, so we could stay focused. Identifying the necessary modifications to internal municipal processes will be the focal point of the committee's review, and our review efforts will not include evaluating the performance of specific individuals. The committee agreed that the next meeting scheduled for February 12 at 5:00 PM would focus exclusively on reviewing the totality of the issues described in the original grievance document dated July 12, 2023. The five call-to-action items delivered to, by the citizens via five separate emails dated November 20, 2024 will be reviewed, one call-to-action per meeting during each subsequently scheduled committee meeting. The committee also agreed that we'll compile one final written summary report responding to all of the citizen-identified grievance issues, and that would be completed at the end. And the written report will include some proposed action plans and be delivered to the mayor and city council and city administrator at the end of the committee's grievance review process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item number five this evening, under general, we do not have anything, but I do have something that I would like to add. Last December, the Bitterford Police Department lost one of their own, 18-year veteran Sergeant Jacob Walterbeek. He was killed in a traffic accident on his way home after his shift. He leaves behind his wife and three young children, all under the age of five. In the spirit of community and support for our neighbors, I will be volunteering my time along with Mayor Gromen, former Mayor Cassavan, and former Mayor Dion, and along with several members from the Bitterford PD for a fundraising event, the Mayor's Night Out. It is going to be this Wednesday, February 5, from 5:00 to 9:00, and there are 16 Bitterford restaurants who will be donating proceeds from the evening to Sergeant Walterbeek's family. If you're not able to attend, you can make donations via visiting the website for the Trooper Black Foundation, and that will be open through February 15. I personally will be onsite at Cowbell, greeting and meeting the patrons. And for a full list of all participating restaurants, you can visit the Facebook page created, Mayor's Night Out, to benefit the Walterbeek family. Hope to see everybody there. Okay, so that's moving on to now, item number six, and that is public comment. If you wish to speak to the council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item number seven this evening, that's the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion for the minutes of January 27, 2025?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Parks? Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, and now takes us to item eight, and that is consent items. And we have five items this evening. Item A is the council schedule, additional meetings April 14, 2025, and April 28, 2025. Item B is the confirmation of the mayor's appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission of Nicholas Labby. Item C is the confirmation of the mayor's appointment to the Board of Assessment Review of Douglas Hono and Travesta Bryant. Item D is the confirmation of the mayor's appointment to the planning board of Camila, Camille White, excuse me. And item E is the confirmation of mayor's appointment to the Park and Rec Advisory Committee of Nick Adams. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion on the items?
I'll give you a second.
Counselor Hatch with the second. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item nine this evening, under action items, the first item up is the local permit application waiver for the planning review application fees and the code enforcement application fees for the Saco Elementary School proposal off of Portland Road, Milbrook Road, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Saco School Department requests an application fee waiver to local planning review for the site review, site plan review, and code enforcement permit application fees for building, electrical, and local plumbing application fees. Similar requests have been approved by the city council in the past for projects such as the Saco Public Works Facility and the Saco Water Resource Recovery Facility. Please note, this request considers local application fees only. Saco schools will still be responsible for paying the relevant state permit fees and the relevant city peer review consultant costs per Chapter 83 Cost Recovery ordinance, as well as any other applicable fee. Be it ordered that the city council hereby waives the local planning department application fee for site plan review and the local code enforcement application fees for building, electrical, and plumbing applications. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Any discussion on the item? Okay, not seeing any, roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay, that now takes us to item B, and that is the amendment to virtual participation in meeting policy, and that is Page 20, and that, Counselor Hatch?
On August 26, 2024, the city council held a workshop to discuss amendments to the city council policy adopted in February 2022 that regulates virtual participation in meetings. On September 9, 2024, and January 27, 2025, this item was presented as a new business item before the council, and additional amendments were discussed. The city council chambers were updated with the technical capability to comply with LD32 and 1 MRS-A Section 403B in the spring of 2023. As requested, a quote for updating other meeting spaces has been received and will be considered by the city administrator during the fiscal year 26 budget process. The amended draft policy sets criteria for conducting, conducting virtual and hybrid meetings for the city council and planning board, while also retaining the option for other committees to meet in person or virtually, and incorporates the other amendments provided by counselors during the August workshop and the September city council meeting. The city council hereby approves the recommended changes made to the virtual participation in meetings policy as identified in Exhibit 1.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Berman? You guys have very similar sounding. All right, any discussion or comments? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I actually had, and I apologize for not doing this more thoroughly sooner, but had a chance to really go thoroughly through this, and I did have some, some comments provided to me by a constituent that I found interesting and valid about making some modifications to the language. So I don't know, for the record, I thought I kind of skimmed through the area of changes that I think we need to either clarify or modify, and I'll try to do that as quickly as possible. On Part B, we talk about remote meetings for city boards, and we pretty much, I think, say it's either in-person or fully remote, but then we further on in the document reference hybrid meetings. And I'm not sure, at least for me, it was a little confusing, and thought that if we were in fact going to move forward with hybrid meetings, that that sentence should include the word hybrid. And so that's, that's one point of clarification I think I'd like to seek and get feedback from the rest of the council.
Removing the term "fully remote" to hybrid?
No, I think, I think in order for it to not be contradictory, the document itself and whole, you need all three. You need, you need fully in-person, fully remote, and then hybrid, I'm assuming is a combination of those two. And then later on, you can see that in Section C, we talk openly about hybrid meetings. So that's, that's one point of clarification I think we need to work on before we approve this document. And then I think we need to talk a little bit more about what we want to come out of this, because I really, I actually think that the hybrid component is going to be fairly challenging to manage and implement. And I only say this, and Counselor Berman may have this experience as well, but I've been involved in corporate training in hybrid environments, and I recognize the challenges of that, that technology, the outcomes, the expectations, and I'm not sure that, that that's going to serve us or our community well. And I also worry somewhat about the cost of that, the cost-benefit, if you will. I know that my Rotary Club, for example, continues to have a hybrid meeting, we're lucky- I, we're lucky if we get one member that signs in every week. It's not a costly thing, but I, I'm not sure how valuable that, that would be. So I'm, I'm a little torn with, um, this hybrid arrangement. I'm, I'm open to discussing it further if, if the council, if the members of the council have strong views on that. And then if I could continue, if you can indulge me here a little bit, B1, B1B, talks about when a member, I'm assuming of the board or, or the planning board or the city council is ill and cannot attend, that do we have that capability of, of coming in, um, remote? So, um, is that, is that hybrid? I guess it's hybrid, but it's not public. And whether or not we want to, uh, define illness a little more succinctly, we've got significant distance, which I understand if we're on vacation, we want to join in or away. That's a good, I think that's a good thing for us to be able to do. But I, I think we should call it temporary geographic distance or temporary travel related. The thing we don't want, and this is a message I got from one of my constituents, is we don't want people serving on the council and they're in Florida for six months and they're going to join every meeting, uh, virtually, because I, I don't, personally, I don't think that's a good thing. And I certainly would, would welcome that, that objection as being very, very valid. So to follow that theme a little further, perhaps we, uh, we think about limiting the number of times that a city, city councillor can join a meeting remotely so that we're, we're not, uh, we're not abusing that, that privilege. And, um, you know, whether it's a couple of times a year or whatever the case may be. So I, I have a, I have a few issues. And I, again, I apologize for not sending this in and getting everybody to digest it. And, and so here's my suggestion. And I'm gonna, uh, and, and maybe I'll hold off on the suggestion with, with the rest of the council weigh in, but I, I'm going to reserve the right to get the floor again after everybody else weighs in. Thank you.
Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and I appreciate Councilor Hatch's attention to, to the details here, and I understand his confusion, so I'm not speaking against that. But my intent and my understanding of, of council's intent in, in giving staff guidance for this document is indeed recognizing the difficulty of hybrid meetings. And so I believe we were setting out to create a two-tiered system in which most city commissions and boards would be either fully remote or fully in-person. And then because of the challenges in hybrid meetings, both in staffing and technology, the City Council and Planning Board were, were set aside or carved out to allow for a hybrid format because of the additional training and staffing that would be required to allow that and to facilitate that smoothly. And indeed, I think that's what's trying to be captured in the distinction between B, which is remote meetings for city boards, and C, which is hybrid meetings for city council and planning boards. Now whether that carve out is, is clear enough or successful enough, I guess council can discuss and revisit. I also recall some discussion about the question of, of what council, uh, should be allowed to do and how often we should be allowed to do it. I appreciate that discussion. I believe Council Johnson, who's not here today, so I'll try to parrot his point as well as I can, is that, of course, it should be limited, and of course, council itself, uh, should be the determining body. That to, uh, to, to have council limit a councillor's professionalism and/or need to do that, uh, I think struck him as a little bit wrong, which eventually, uh, I came to agree with. My initial, uh, inclination was to put either a numeric limit on it or, or require the mayor's approval. And there is still, I think, Section D 3, a determination to be made as to a member of a meeting body's ability to participate remotely by the chair of that body, which in the case of our body, uh, would be the mayor, in consultation with the body's staff member and/or administration. Therefore, I assume the mayor and city administrator would work together on such a request from a council member. I agree with the challenges of hybrid meetings. They can be difficult to manage. But as we see tonight with a, a council member away, and people will recall, uh, about six months ago, I had a busy work-travel schedule requiring me to meet several meetings or miss several meetings that I would prefer not to have missed while I was sitting in hotel rooms. If we can find a way to allow hybrid meetings, I think would be of great benefit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Gunn?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, to, um, to Councilor Hatch's point though, I'm definitely open to having the discussion, all the points he made. Because, um, yes, my interpretation of this document was that essentially, we've designed it so the council and/or the planning board, if appropriate, deemed appropriate by the chair of the respective bodies, could have a hybrid meeting. That being said, I, my expectation was the rest of the boards, committees, and commissions would essentially have the option of in-person or, um, um, remote meetings at the discretion of the chair. My interpretation was, and forgive me if I'm wrong on this one, was the reason it was written the way it was is because to be, to be compliant with the law on these type, on this issue from Augusta, we essentially have to, in theory, allow hybrid meetings down the line. But at the same time, we are strongly encouraging the chairs of our boards, committees, and commissions that are outside, obviously, the council and the planning board, to go either or for simplicity, for the convenience of the members, for the simple money involved, for the technology, et cetera. So that's my interpretation going into this whole thing. And if that needs any more codifying, I'd certainly appreciate that if there's going to be more further discussion, and I'm interpreting that as potentially what's going to happen. In terms of using the hybrid feature for a member of the council, or I suppose in this case, member of the planning board, I am comfortable with the mayor making the determination of whether or not the absence is legitimate. You know, the mayor does recognize members' presence, so I believe it's in their power, as well as the ch- uh, power of the, uh, planning board chair to decide if an absence is valid enough reason for a hybrid meeting. Now, we could always put in a device to have an, essentially, an appeal to the council. But at the same time, I think that would be a nice balance to prevent any future, um, particular councillors from going al capoco and just, you know, relying on their friendship with the mayor to ensure that they're always going to be at the meeting. You always want to have a little check on that. But at the same time, I think public perception is a check enough, and I always trust having a mayor make that decision though, because that way you don't have to make a committee decision on those type of things, which, you know, whether it's us or the planning board, there might be a lot of hurt feelings. So, um, I recognize I lost the, the debate when it came to hybrid meetings, but this is where we are. That's why I'd be in favor of everything except planning and, uh, a council being strongly, uh, either in-person or, uh, remote, no in-between, but that's how I feel about things. And, uh, well, that's democracy for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Council Hatch?
Yes, sir.
And then city administrator did have something he'd like to chime in after.
I, I will, I will back off.
Okay. If you look at the redline version we have attached as well, and all the, we really stripped it down. And to try to address council members', you know, concerns. So we tried to keep it as simple as possible, stripped it down. Key thing to remember here, it's a policy. It's, you know, you can change it as a council. My suggestion would be, is to, you know, if unless people are in a rush to put this forward, is to table it for tonight and, and allow for those that want to add anything to send them to me, and then we'll do another redline version. We just, you know, we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it. So, uh, but I, I just want to let you know that, you know, it probably isn't the, the most cohesive type of document because of all the things we took out to try to capture what the city council wanted. So I have no problem if you want to, um, table it and then send me some of your comments on where, you know, go through and, and, and then make any adjustments you see, and I can do another redline version for you.
And we can do similar, what we did with the Rules and Order of Business, that we brought it back as a new business item so it could be discussed prior to bringing a final back for vote. So we could follow the same procedure that we just recently did with the Rules and Order. If that worked for everybody. Council Hatch?
I was gonna make, I came prepared to make a motion to, to table, and if we got a second, then, um, and then when we need, I don't want to create an immediate date specific. I, I want to give, you know, I don't know if we want to push it out to not next meeting, but the one that follows that. And that would, that would give us all an opportunity, including myself, to sit down and actually give the city administrator our suggested changes. We can bring it back to the floor, and then we can all look at, at, uh, I, I like the new business idea, though. So, um, so I'm going to change my motion. I'm going to make a motion to bring this back to council at a, a future date.
It'll still be a table motion.
Table as well, okay. Then that's, that, that's the, uh, motion I'll put on the floors to table, and then bring it back as, as new business so we can discuss it further.
Would you want to put a date certain of February 24th, or? Or more?
Yeah, I think the more time we have, the better for us and for you. Maybe we can grab the last meeting of, of February. I don't want to get too close.
That's the last meeting.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't want to get into the budget season and...
You could do, uh, March 3rd or March 10th, whatever you want.
All right. So let's, let's, let's go for the, um, March 10th. Give us plenty of time. So that's my motion. Table. New business, March 10th.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to table by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
And Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Okay, item number C is a building permit waiver for construction of the Saco Splash Pad, and that is Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Department is asking for the building permit fee of $3,000 for the construction of the Splash Pad to be waived by the city council. Project is in partnership with the Rotary Club of Bitterford and Saco and is being mostly funded through donations. We had ordered that the city council hereby waives the building permit fee of $3,000 for the construction of the Splash Pad. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Edwards? Any discussion on the item? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, as a member of the Rotary Club of Bitterford and Saco, I feel like I should disclose that fact and ask if the council would like me to recuse myself from this vote.
Does council have any objection to Councilor Berman voting? Okay, not seeing any objection. If you'd like to vote, you're cleared. Okay, any other discussion or comments? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Okay, that completes the action items this evening, and that now takes us to item 10, and that is an administrative update. City Administrator Behanko?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, first one is the Saco Island Multi-Modal Bridge Project. On behalf of the cities of Saco and Bitterford, we have signed a contract with the firm of Thornton Tomasetti for preliminary and final design services to build a bridge across the Saco River between the two cities. The contract amount is for a maximum of $726,000. The Economic Development Director is a lead project administrator for this project. And just to remind people that the federal share is 75% and local share is 25%. The next item is Main Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. On Thursday, February 6th, the Saco Police Department will be involved in an all-day onsite assessment by the Main Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. If we are successful during this process, the Saco Police Department will be granted accreditation. Regional Command College, Saco Police Chief Jack Clements, has been accepted to the New England Regional Command College, taking place on March 9th through the 12th in Massachusetts. The Regional Command College is a powerful program that is critically important to fulfill the FBI's law enforcement and national security mission, advance training, and build crucial partnerships with local agencies across the country. I congratulate Chief Clements on his acceptance of the program. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, moving on to item 11, that's council discussion and comment. Any councilists wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing any. And that takes us to item 12. Is there a motion for executive session? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. We had ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRS A Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter, uh, 1, Section 405.6E, consultation between the municipality and its attorney.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman? Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion to enter executive session at 7:27. Passes six-zero, and we will be downstairs in the conference room.
Okay, welcome back everybody. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session passes at 8:25, 6:0. Is there a report?
No report.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 14, and that's adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Berman, and is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
And Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 6:0 at 8:26. Thank you everyone, and have a great evening.